A special meeting of the Plackman Parish Council. 3:30 PM, Belchase Council Office Building Chambers. It's now called to order. We'll have roll call. Let the record reflect that we have eight council members present. Mr. Alborough is absent. We'll have the prayer and the President, the Pledge of Allegiance. We take this moment to acknowledge Almighty God and thank Him for His boundly blessing, especially for the parish's natural resources. We give thanks to God for our brave and courageous men and women in our military, who daily risk their lives to protect our precious freedom, and we pray for our world leaders to know how to attain world peace. We pray for this government body comprised of both council and administration will always serve our parish with honesty, humility, and equality for all, and for the wisdom to know right from wrong and the courage to do that which is right. And as this government body gathers here today, we pray that we will be spared from all harm and destruction this hurricane season. This I pray, in Jesus' mighty name, and all God's children say, "Amen."
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this special meeting is here for replacement of the register of voters. We have the applicants present in the chambers today. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna ask each one of y'all to leave, and we're gonna start with the first applicant of Ms. Sharon Brennan. She's gonna take you out to an office in the back on the side. And we're gonna call each one in, one at a time.
I think you did it alphabetically, right?
Yes. The first one would be Sharon Brennan. The next one is Sheila Calentano. Victoria Farrison, Jennifer Gray, Lynn Jenkins, and Brian Van Helderberg. Miss Brennan, would you like to please come up to the hot seat right here? To the hot seat. Miss Brennan, would you like to please come up to the hot seat right here? To the hot seat. We're gonna put it on. Anyone? Is it on? Okay. Wait until Kim comes, she's gonna put it on. Oh, Keita Mike? Keita? No, okay. Okay, check it.
Check, check. There it is. All right. Well, first, I want to ask if I answered all of the questions to everyone's satisfaction. If any of you have a question that you posed, or that anyone else posed, that you would like more, that you would like me to elaborate on, I'd be happy to do that first.
First, Sharon, I would like to give you this opportunity to give an open statement, if you would like to give one.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm gonna control it.
Of course. All right. This has been a fascinating year, and as we approached this presidential election, I found myself wondering, is my vote safe? How can there be so much confusion surrounding such an important issue? I've run for public office more than once, and in every race, each candidate has the -- hello? Has the opportunity to inspect the machines and be present when early votes and mail-in votes are counted. I have accepted every opportunity as often as possible, and even with these opportunities, I still had unanswered questions. How secure are our voting machines when not used, and why are they stored outside of the parish? Why are our machines in the same warehouse as another parish? Why are the early voting machines kept in another location? How secure are any of the machines when they're not in use? Who has access to these machines when they're stored? Can I trust the voting process, and exactly who is it we're trusting? Today, you have the opportunity to ensure the safety and security of our votes in Plackman's Parish. Today, your vote is the vote that counts. If I were in your seat today, here are some questions I would be asking myself right now. What happens if someone with a political agenda is our next registrar of voters? They may be on a favorable side today, but what about tomorrow? Have any of my fellow council members already promised to vote for an applicant without learning as much as possible about every single other applicant? How clean is our voting process? And I would ask myself, how do you know all of your votes were counted correctly in your last election? And what about the next time you run? Today, with this appointment, you won't change the country, but you can change Plackman's. You can create an office that is above reproach and is example of every level of transparency, efficiency, and implemented with fidelity. You can have clean voting rolls. You can trust that the vote you cast will be counted. You can trust that every single vote that is cast for you in the next election will be counted. You can trust that if you pay someone to do a job, they're going to show up for work. You can trust that I am absolutely the right person to be our next registrar of voters. As you know, this is a lifetime appointment, and unlike Amy Coney Barrett, I'm clearly not forty-something. And I won't hold this position for twenty or thirty years, but I can promise you, I will be in this position as long as it takes to bring this office into the 21st century with the highest level of transparency and honesty. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Hold on. Hold on. Do we have anyone from the table that would like to ask any question? Ms. Newberry?
Yes. How you doing, Ms. Brennan? I'm here with an open mind, so just to let you know, I don't know who I'm voting for today, so I'm willing to listen to everyone's statements like you put into place here. I do have a question. On your resume, it shows that you provide assessment and evaluation to the education system regarding its operations and individuals. Is that correct?
Correct.
So how are you gonna bring that role as an educator to the registrar of voters office? How would you assess that?
Key again? Key again? Can we put the President -- hold on.
Oh, here we go. Okay. As an educational diagnostician with a multidisciplinary testing team in Jefferson Parish, I have to adhere to very strict state guidelines. Bulletin 1508 is very clear about how a child gets labeled. It's a very big responsibility when you label a child with autism or an intellectual disability. So there are very strict guidelines. So the main similarity would be, is I'm very well capable of adhering to state guidelines and following procedure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Sharon.
Hi.
I have a question that, you know, I'm gonna ask every candidate, and you actually hit on it in your opening, and I was glad to hear that, because you mentioned not having someone with a political agenda. So you had mentioned also that you did run for political office before and held office in the school board. Do you think that type of political affiliation or holding an elected office in the past or working for someone in politics helps or hurts you in this role as registrar of voters? And just kind of elaborate on that, if you would.
Sure, sure. Well, in any question like that, it's all gonna boil down to the integrity and honesty of that person. But for myself, I'm an independent, and I don't believe that the fact that I ran as a Democrat for the school board, and it's been probably eight years since I've been on the school board. I'm not a big red or blue kind of person, you know. When I'm looking at a candidate for president or anything else, it's more about the character of that person than a party affiliation. I don't like labeling people, and I feel like party affiliations tend to label people. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Hello, Ms. Brennan. I assure you, I come in today with an open mind, evaluation of the candidates, and we'll make a decision based on that. And I do know you from the past, we're shared races together, and I appreciate your effort to step up and take on a challenge in this department. As you know, my question from the questionnaire was about showing up for work, being full-time, and having accountability in the office for the employees that are there. It's been a problem for me that I've had constituents tell me that, you know, that there's not a full presence in the office of the employees that are there. So you answered the question that I submitted, that you would, you know, serve with honesty, integrity, and that you would have a full-time presence in the office, and you know that the office is in Port Sulfur. And so I guess my question is a follow-up on that, of how would you implement an attendance or time requirement for the employees and yourself in the office to make sure that we fulfill that? And to lead into that, I'd like you to know my real feel about the registrar of voters' office. I believe that the registrar of voters' office should actually be absorbed by the clerk of court's office and be abolished statewide. I believe that it would be serving the public a lot better had it be merged into the clerk of court's office, because I'm not sure of the workload that persists all year long, especially in a parish as small as ours. But until that would happen, if you're successful, I'd like to know how you will approach the position.
All right. Hello? Okay. Well, first off, there's a lot we can do to educate the voters and to register new voters. Cleaning up the voter rolls is gonna be a huge undertaking for at least the first couple of years, and then getting a procedure in place that kind of is automatic so that things don't get out of hand. Because I know, as a candidate, when I would do a mail-out, I would get so many things returned, because that person wasn't -- tons of people were not at that address anymore. So I think there is a lot to do, and at least in the first few years. As far as keeping track of the employees, I wouldn't spend a lot of money on any kind of biometric kind of technology. What I use right now to keep up with the caregivers for my aging parents is, it's an app that's $100 a month, and they log in from their phone, and it's got GPS on it, so they can't even log in from the parking lot. They have to log in from their phone when they're in my mom and dad's apartment. If they don't log in, I get an email. If they don't log out, I get an email. So can't get any simpler than that. And in this day and age, who's gonna give up their phone long enough to let somebody else go in the office and clock in for them and keep that phone there all day to be able to clock out? So I think there -- and it's not a huge office either, so we're not talking about keeping up with ninety employees.
Thank you for the answer, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Patholomy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Brennan, I want to thank you for applying.
Thank you.
You're due. I had some experience with you over the years in the educational arena, and you've been during that time of my observation, you were very efficient and effective.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And everything was organized, and everyone knew what they needed to do. And that means that comes from professionalism.
Thank you.
And I honestly believe that you have that same professionalism if you get this particular position. But my question is, what are you going to do to constantly deal with our young people? And what you're gonna provide to them to release how important it is to be a voter? And what they should do, why they should need these things, you know? What you planning on doing?
Right. And that's, I think, it goes back to Ms. Newberry's question of how education goes hand-in-hand with this position. Because being familiar with education, being a teacher, special ed teacher, I've got about five certifications in education. So I love working with young people, from the gifted to the mentally challenged. So I would definitely work with the schools. We only have, you know, two handfuls of schools. It's not like a huge parish, you know? There's no reason we can't be in a school once a week and helping with the civics classes or any number of things. I mean, like Mr. Russell said, once things get going, there isn't gonna be a lot to do. So we do have to get creative and really make that presence known, and I think educating the young people and getting back those voters that are on the rolls that vote once every five or six years. Why aren't they voting? Where are they? How do we touch them? How do we get them to be engaged again? How do we let them know how to get a new voter registration card? How to change your affiliation? So, and it's a little cumbersome, because actually, I went in to change mine from Democrat to independent, and it took me more than a little minute to figure out where to go and what to do, and I had to go to the Secretary of State website, and actually, I gave up and finally said, "Well, let me just get another copy of my card," and aha! That's where I found out where I could change to an independent. So things like that, that we can maybe, we might not be able to change it on a state level, but we can get it to a more granular level to help with our local people.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Goy?
I'm done.
You're done? Any more questions from the table? Anything you'd like to give in a closing statement?
Yeah, I just appreciate this opportunity. I love my parish. I've lived here my whole life. My family's been here since the '30s, and I just want to continue to serve my parish in some way. And even if I don't get this, I'll be back trying to get something else to be able to serve my parish. So you haven't seen the last of me.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. After we finish interviewing the rest of the applicants, we'll go into executive session and discuss what the interview is. You have any problem of us discussing you in executive session?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. So you say Ms. Sheila's not here?
Yes, sir.
So we'll come up with -- Ms. Victoria?
Yes.
Farrison?
Ms. Calentano's not here?
No.
Okay, so we can scratch her off?
What'd you say, Mr. Leo? How you doing?
Congratulations on making the runoff.
You're kinda bruised up? From the fight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farrison, would you like to give an open statement?
Sure. My name is Victoria Lynn Farrison. I'm born and raised Plackman's Parish, always been home. I've been working for the clerk of court for the past twenty years. I've been a poll commissioner, as well as commissioner in charge, even in yesterday's election. I would be beneficial for this position in that I feel my background with the court system. My main area of focus is the conveyance and mortgage indices, real estate transactions, and to better be able to inviting, you know, new parties moving into our parish, having them register to vote, and keeping up with the proper rules. I know, working yesterday, we did have some issues on the precincts that I worked in, and I am a perfectionist and would like to clarify any and all problems that we may have in the future and have had some dealings in the past.
Is there any questions from the table? Mr. Black?
Welcome. Thank you for being here and applying for this position. I'm asking pretty much the same question to everybody. So the question is, is do you believe that having a political affiliation, whether or not you've run for office or currently in office, have held office before, or worked for a political entity, does that, is it beneficial or not beneficial to this position?
I think it's beneficial to this position only because of the position that I had, or have, I should say, not had. On a daily basis, we work with, you know, any and all transactions within the parish. And just to be able to get the -- just to be able to know the comings and goings of the people and tracking them down and keeping up with statistics for our parish is what we need, you know? But as far as political affiliations, that would not hinder or, like political parties would not hinder my job in any way.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, and thank you, and welcome to this process. You answered my question that I submitted, and my question revolves around time and attendance, basically.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to know how you would approach the office from the standpoint of accountability in the office for those hours and things I had mentioned to the previous candidate, and I'll mention to most of them, to all of them, actually, that I believe that the registrar of voters' office should be merged and consolidated into the clerk of court's office to eliminate that office, and I think it would run more efficiently, and it would absorb some of the time that I think that'll go unused in an office, because I'm not sure of what the workload is all year long.
Correct.
I understand that there are registration times and there are elections and so forth, but overall, I think that the service would be better served out of that office. However saying that, I'd like to know how you would approach the position, being in the office in Port Sulfur is where the location is.
I love the idea of a time clock, just having accountability for your service hours to be in the office. A lot of times, forty hours a week for me at this point in time is not a clock for me. It's usually more so I work -- I have put in more time in the office of my own time. I have been approached about or been made aware that other offices do have the clerk and the registrar combined as one. If that, I mean, in the long run, if you really look at it, it would be more cost-effective, because it would save the parish money. And I mean, if that is something that we could do, I would really be, you know, open to that fact if I were given the position. I do, I mean, I know I can't have both jobs. If it was up to me, I would still have both jobs, you know, if I do get the position.
Thank you.
Mrs. Newberry?
How you doing? Nice meeting you, Ms. Farrison. Thank you for being here. You said you have twenty years as an election commissioner?
Working precincts.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel there are any weaknesses that need to be strengthened in the office?
In the office, per se? I don't know the ins and outs of the office. Working the precincts, yes. There needs to be more scenario-based classes held for the commissioners, as well as the commissioners in charge, working Election Day.
So y'all not required to be in a training?
We do have a class, we do all take a test.
Is it yearly, or every so many years, or?
We have to do it yearly. And you're elected for the clerk's term, so the clerk appoints them. And then the commissioners in charge are yearly.
All right.
And, but there is a test, but this day-to-day scenario of a person walking in to vote, to me, you should have those scenarios for different occasions that we even saw yesterday, you know? I mean, and we had a lady that was on the polls listed, well, the registrar of voters' hall had her listed as deceased, and she walked in to vote. So I mean, that was a problem that I had yesterday. I also had some scenarios, you know, with the ID, with the real ID, and different things like that. And you really can't expect every scenario that you're gonna come up with, but if you could try to get a gist of a scenario to try to get your people familiar with it, that's gonna be working the precincts. And I mean, I know that's through the clerk, not through the register. The register handles absentee voting. Early voting, I should say, in absentee.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any more questions from the table?
I have one.
Please key in. Mr. Patholomy?
Yes. What would you do to assist the students in junior high and high school, but mainly high school students, and encouraging them to register to vote, and how important it is? What would you do to try to cover that bridge?
I know a career day that they do hold. The clerk goes out. I'm not sure if the registrar went out as well. But just, I had an eighteen-year-old work the polls with me yesterday. I contacted him, and, you know, to get him involved. And of course, you have to be registered in order to work that commission, but they like the money. But just several career days and the opportunity to let them know that this does count and just to get them out, that your voice does matter.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you also for applying for the position as well.
Thank y'all very much for having me here today.
Is there any more questions from the table? Ms. Victoria, would you like to give a closing statement?
I would just like to thank y'all all for allowing me to apply for the position and for your hearing, giving me the opportunity to come up here and interview for it. Thank y'all very much, and I hope that if I do get it, you know, my door would be an open-door policy, and we could all come together for, address any changes that need to be made.
Ms. Victoria, well, thank you for coming for this interview. After we interview all the applicants, we're gonna go into executive session and discuss the applicants. Do you have any problem of us discussing you in executive session?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day, thank you.
You too. So could you please bring in Ms. Jennifer Gray? Good evening, Ms. Gray. I would like to start by, would you like to give an opening statement?
Sure. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Gray. I've been a
I think you can pull your mask down so
Piggy-dang.
You can hear better, so we can hear you better.
I've been a lifetime resident of Plackman's Parish, graduated from Belchase High School in 2001. From there, I went to Our Lady of Holy Cross. I have an undergrad in political science, and then another undergrad in nursing. From 2012, 2009 to 2012 From 2012, 2009 to 2012, I worked on the floor nursing. So, from birth till, I guess you'd say labor and delivery, until 2020, when I started, when I finished my executive, I was an Executive Director of Palliative Care. So from birth to end-of-life care. I have worked serving the public.
Is there, is there any questions for Ms. Gray? Ms. Newberry?
How you doing, Ms. Gray? Thank you for applying. Appreciate you coming here today. I do have a question. You are a registered nurse. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so why do you want to get out of that position into the political, I mean, into the Register of Voters position? What made you, your interest, what is your interest?
Politics does affect nursing, the way that we vote.
I know nursing is a hard, you know, your education is nursing and a lot of people have passion for nursing. And I was just, you know, wanting to know why your change of nursing? Is it, you just want to change your career path is what it is?
I've been in leadership since 2012, doing strategic alignment for Ashner. So I've been in, away from the bedside since about 2012 to 2019, part of an acquisition team. Implementation, strategic alignment, as a study for my, you know, doctoral degree in Nurse Practitioner. But, so for a while now, I've been away from the bedside. But it's the decisions that are made in politics that really impact healthcare. So it's not really leaving the healthcare field. It's being part of the arena that's dictating to us our patient care.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, welcome, Ms. Gray. Thank you for your application. I've asked this question to the previous two candidates and I'm going to ask it to everybody else behind you. Do you agree or disagree that having a political affiliation, whether or not being in an elected office, have ran for elected office, worked for someone in an elected position, has benefits or negatives to the Registry of Voters office? And elaborate on that, if you would.
I would say that staying neutral, politically neutral, no matter if you've had an affiliation or worked for someone, you stay neutral in the environment of the Register of Voters position. You stay political. Don't, with healthcare, it's the same. We don't identify. We don't advertise that we're part of a political affiliation because we don't really want anyone to feel that we pick or choose where we align with. That answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thanks.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gray, and thank you for your application. My question was sent to everyone and it relies on your response to how would you apply yourself in the office as far as time and attendance and accountability within the office? As I mentioned to every candidate so far, I believe that the office should be absorbed, merged into the Clerk of Court's office for efficiencies. That's a state decision that has to be made, however. And I think that if that was to happen, it would be much better off there rather than a standalone entity as it is now across the state. However, since it is that way, I believe that some accountability and time and attendance should be implemented in the office to make sure that the public is served properly and people are there to serve them properly on a regular basis. And as you know, the office, or you should know, that the office is in Port Sulfur and how will that affect you and your implementation of the accountability?
Visibility is a priority in leadership positions. So you have to be there. You have to set an example for others. In my opinion, the office being in Port Sulfur really wouldn't hinder me in any way in that position as long as you're visible to your staff. You set an example of time and attendance and we're there to serve the public. And that's what we do. We have to be there and serve them within the hours of the operation. I don't see a problem with it being in Port Sulfur. I don't see a problem with them moving wherever it may better serve the public as long as there's leadership and staff available to serve them.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pathology?
Thank you, Ms. Gray, for applying for this position. I'm concerned about education. I'm an educator, really by true profession. The other stuff is just supplemental. But what would you do to encourage young people to understand the process of voting and how important it is to become a voter? From your standpoint on your office, how would you, would you do anything to facilitate that?
I believe going into the communities, going into the schools, even if it was maybe doing a mock voting or, you know, I think starting at an age of maybe 17. In nursing, we say there's no real limit on when you can start teaching. You can start teaching at 2 years old, wash your hands, hygiene, brush your teeth. There's no reason that we wouldn't be going into the schools or into the communities and teaching, you know, this, the population, the community. This is what each role does. This is how this role affects you going forward in your life. And this is why it's important that you vote. Because, you know, these decisions will impact your life, maybe not immediately, but it will in the future and your children's lives. So the more I feel that our visibility is there, the more we drive home the importance from the earliest standpoint we can in high schools, even middle school. I don't know if that's too soon. But just, I feel that there would be better understanding, maybe more participation in voting. That's my opinion.
Thank you so much. We need it so much.
I know.
And I appreciate that attitude for that purpose. Because so go those youngsters, so go our future.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for that.
Is there any more questions from the table? Ms. Gray, I would like to, would you like to give a closing statement?
Sure. I have served the community in every way that I can, whether it's through the pandemic, working with, as a legislative aide since January 2020. I do know that there is a need for education in politics here. There's a need for education all the way around for them to understand the process of voting, the different positions that you're even voting on and how they impact your life. I would like to be part of the local community growth where I've been born and raised.
Okay, Ms. Gray, I want to thank you for coming, participating in this interview today. When we finish interviewing everyone, we will go into executive session. Do you have any problem of us discussing you in executive session?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Jenkins.
Hello.
I want to thank you for participating in the interview today. You can pull it down so you can hear you a little better. I would like to ask you, would you like to give an opening statement?
Sure. I'm right now in the interim Registrar of Voters. I've been in the office for 13 and a half years. I started out at the bottom as a confidential assistant. Then when Mary Bures retired, I was able to go up to Chief Deputy. And now, with the retirement of Kathleen Kettner, like I said, I've been the acting registrar. I have, by my, on my own, ran the last five elections in training. So I have a lot of knowledge of what to do. And when problems come up, I, they're handled correctly. See, I've gone through a lot of training, be it over the internet or our seminars that we go to yearly. We do election academies. We do workshops. I've done many, many hours of it. There's so many things I wanted to say and they're not coming out. I just hope that I can make y'all proud of me and proud of the office if y'all do decide to hire me.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the table? Mr. Black?
Yeah, Ms. Jenkins, thank you for your application and applying for the position. I've asked this question previously to the other candidates and I'll ask to the remaining candidates. Do you agree or disagree that having a political affiliation, having either been an elected official before, ran for political office, or working for a, an elected official, does that, does that in any way hamper or hurt the position of Registrar of Voter?
As long as you stay neutral in your political factors afterwards you get the position, I don't think it has any bearing on the position. But once you are in that office, you can have, you have to stay neutral. You cannot have any Facebook friends that are politicians. You can't post political stuff. You can't go to the parties that they might throw after. You can't even have a sign in your yard. So I don't think it would have any bearing on a position, no.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, hello, Ms. Jenkins, and thank you for coming and applying today. My question has been about time and attendance and accountability in the office. As I've stated to previous candidates that I believe that the office should be merged and consolidated into the Clerk of Court's office for efficiencies statewide, although I understand that it is a state decision to do that. However, in your role, how do you approach or would you approach the issues of time and attendance and accountability in the office?
Well, I personally have no problem with having a time clock of any sort in there. And I expect my employees to show up to work as they should. And I will be in the office every day, like I've been. I've been so dedicated to the position that even when the office was closed for COVID for all that time, three days a week, I would go to the post office, pick up mail. And I would go into the office and I would actually process anything going on. Same thing for the hurricane. I'm dedicated to this position and I expect my employees, if I get this position, to be there and to be dedicated also. If not, I will handle that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Newberry?
How you doing, Ms. Jenkins? Thank you for coming today. I actually have a couple of questions and I'm asking because you're in this position, I mean, the position you're in for several years. So, the first question is, you had made a statement in question two about, where's the questions? Sorry. Anyway, can you tell me the system we're using? Because you said something about a same as a statewide. Is that the system we're using? Is that a statewide system?
Are you talking about our software system?
I'm talking about, yes.
Yes, it's called Aaron.
Okay, and is that hooked up to the internet?
Yes, it's a dedicated state line.
So, how do we secure and how will you be able to improve our security of that system? Is there a way that we can improve that system? What is your intake?
Not us personally, because everything is run by the state. But they have their factors set in there with all the firewalls and things like that. But as, we can't even add, like, a scanner driver. It has to be done through the state. We can't add anything onto it for the security purposes. But as for me adding security, no, I can't.
So do you feel our system is secured?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Have we ever had any issues with hacking or anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Because I was just wondering if, is there someone that overlooks those situations of, those firewalls? Those come with a software system. Is that correct, you're saying?
Correct. Yes, they have an entire IT department that handles all of that.
Okay. And what is your take on employee training? Is there a system they have to follow with the state? Or there are other implements that you feel that those people need to add to that? Those, that certain training that need to be in place for them to increase their knowledge of what needs to take place?
Yes, they have continuing education. Like I said, we go three years, three times a year. We have our seminars where we go for two or three days where they have different classes. They'll have ethics. They'll have the Aaron training. And I've actually gone through signature recognition training three times to learn, to find the little indices that change over the years as you get older because there's always one factor, you know, things like that. Then there's also an election academy where we go and they teach us new things. And that usually is two or three days. And it could be either with the laws and procedures or it could be through our Aaron system. And we also do a workshop once a year that is held by the Registry of Voters Association, where we go and anything new that they didn't bring up, we learned there. And it's also to, in this office, the best training is hands-on. It's not a job where, if you know Word and Excel, you can just walk in and learn. There's a lot to learn. And when you start out on the bottom and you start learning, you know, how to put in registrations, your changes, and then you learn how to do mail ballots. It's a hands-on position, really. That's the best way.
Another candidate said our machines are located out of the parish. Is that true?
Yes, that's handled through the state because there's no place here large enough. And it's, it's the Election Day machines. It's not our early vote machines. Our early vote machines are kept at the Registrar of Voters office, securely locked in a room. But the state handles where the machines are kept.
So that is not our decision?
No, ma'am. Not that I know of. I mean, y'all could, if y'all had a place to secure them and if y'all got with the state, y'all could probably change it up if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Mr. Blank?
Sure. I haven't asked this of any other candidates. They probably just don't know. Ms. Jenkins, since you work in the office, how many employees are currently in the Register of Voters office?
Three. Well, right at this time, two.
And do you think, due to the small rural nature of the parish, do you think you can get by with less folks within the office?
I would need at least two, me and a chief deputy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pathology?
Jenkins, I just want to thank you for applying for the job. The question I was asking, you have answered it in your question previously to that part of it would answer my question. So I wouldn't want to duplicate that question again. But thank you for your applying. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Jenkins, thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, we'd like to thank you for participating in this interview. Would you like to give a closing statement?
Well, I would just like to thank you for considering me as a registrar. Like I said, I've had a lot of experience in a position. I've ran plenty of elections. I'm very confident in my ability to run this office. And I hope y'all give me the shot and a chance because I promise y'all make you proud of me and this office.
Ms. Jenkins, when we finish interviewing the next applicant, we will go into executive session. Do you have any problem of us discussing you in an executive session?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Let the record reflect that we have Mr. Corey Albro present. Good evening, Mr. Brian.
Evening. How are you?
Okay. I will start by asking you, would you like to give an opening statement?
Opening a statement? I know not everybody on the board knows me or anything. Private Everbank, lifelong resident of Blackman's Parish. Been a business owner and worked all my life in the parish here. Wanting to continue to stay in this parish, work in this parish, and support this parish and move forward in this parish, try to help out in any way I possibly can. And hearing this position come open, it fit right time for me to try to do something different that I've never done before.
Is there any questions for the table? Mr. Black?
Yeah, thank you for your application, Mr. Van Haverback. I appreciate it. I've asked this question to the previous candidates and you're the last one, so I'll end it with you. Do you agree or disagree or feel that having held political office, ran for political office, or worked for somebody who is an elected official, does that help or hamper, or even having a political affiliation, help or hamper the position of Registrar of Voter? having a political affiliation, help or hamper the position of registrar voter? Just elaborate on that if you would.
On my behalf, I've never ran for a government position before. I've never campaigned, I've never been a part of anything, you know, with anybody, so I have no affiliates in anything. I don't think that hurts me, though. It's come in neutral, unbiased, you know, all the way around in the situation. I don't feel that it hurts me. Like I said, I've been a business owner, I've managed and operated two different locations with several crews, you know, coming in and out, being able to work as a team with different offices and with different people, different, different organizations. I say, and I come in completely non-biased on anything, you know, on this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Russell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Van Haverback, for applying for the position and attending today's interview. My question has been submitted to all the candidates and it had to do with time and attendance and accountability. And as I've stated to all previous candidates that I believe this position should be merged and consolidated into the clerk of courts office for various reasons of economy of scale as well as the operation on a daily basis. I'm not sure the workload that this office handles on a daily basis, but I think that it would be more efficient if there was part of the clerk's office. Now, having said that, I'd like to know how you would approach the office from accountability standpoint of time and attendance with the office being in Port Sulfur and the employees that would be there in the office with you.
Time and availability on this, I believe that it is a full-time position going all the way around. You've got to be accountable, same thing. Traveling in Port Sulfur is not a problem. You know, from any aspect on my end, I'm used to traveling on an aspect to Homer, where that was where one of my other locations were, and unfortunately, it was oilfield business that we've had to shut down. So that's no, no longer any conflicts. Being a part with the clerk of courts, to be honest, in that, in that position, when this came about, I actually thought that this was part of the, being in the clerk of courts, you know, position. They handle a lot with the, with the voters. They handled everything yesterday, you know? It's, the register handles everything prior to that, you know, to my knowledge. But no, I do believe it's a full-time position. You have to be accountable for it. It's an important role. You got to, there's, put it, there's what, an election in four, in four weeks, so you got to start all over again. There's no downtime. You got to make sure different things are out, mail-in ballots, as we all know what's going on right now. These mail-out ballots coming in and out and might not know who a true president for, for this country is going to be for another day or two.
Okay, thank you very much for the.
Not a problem, yes, sir.
Is there any more questions from the table? Mr. Patholome.
Yes, sir, thank you. You have answered my question in number three, as an educational component, and I appreciate the development of that concept, I really do, because that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
And our young people need to be exposed and educated and know the facts and how to get it done, you know? So I, I, I really believe in that. So I ran, thank you for your answer on here, because I was going to ask you the question, but you took it from me, so I ain't going to say nothing.
Not a problem, yes, sir.
But again, I want to, I appreciate you very much for being very sincere on your application and the way you explain it and the process that you plan to implement says that. So again, appreciate you taking time to, to apply for this position, because it's very important, as you stated, and also our young people are. So I want to thank you for doing that.
Not a problem, thank you, sir. Thank y'all for the opportunity.
Any more questions from the table? Mr. Heavenback, I would like to thank you for coming and participating in this interview and actually if you would like to give any closing statement.
No, sir, at this point in time, I'm good. I think, as what I've stated before, answering the questions, what I submitted to y'all for the board for review speaks of character.
Good. Mr. Bryan, do you have any problem with us discussing you in executive session?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heavenback. Is there any questions or comments from the audience before we go into executive session?
I'm coming, one second. Okay. Hi, Kim Turlich Vaughn, clerk of court. I want to thank you all for taking the opportunity to interview these applicants for this very important position. The registrar and I work very close together, or I make the attempt for us to work very close together to ensure the success of every election day. I know through listening to these interviews, I think there's a little bit of misconception on the role of the registrar and the clerk of court. And I know for years, Benny, and I have discussed this, that, that could possibly, the amount of work could be combined with the clerk of court, but unfortunately, that is a state-directed decision. As far as the voting machines, I know a lot of you asked about the voting machines. The registrar is not charged with the responsibility of election day voting. The registrar is required to, or is charged with the collection of the votes prior to the early votes and the mail-in votes. It's the collection of those votes. The clerk of court is charged with the tabulation of those votes, submitting those votes. I know, Trudy, you had some questions about the secure line. That is a state-dedicated line that is through my office. The registrar office also has that, but we do all the transmitting of the votes through, underneath the clerk of court. So again, the registrar is charged with the collection, the registration of voters, the collection of early absentee mail-in ballots, and the clerk is responsible for the tabulation. So the question about the machines and the security of the machines, that is all handled through the Secretary of State, election day machines. The early voting machines are maintained with the registrar's office and it's under their security. So just wanted to clear up a few things about that. And as far as the education of voters, again, through the registration of voters, that is something through the registrar's office and there are programs and things like that, National Voters Week, things like that, that can be utilized to handle that. I invite each and every one of you, I have worked very hard to make sure that the transparency is there for elections and the integrity of our elections are kept intact. The registrar has worked with me for that, for the years that I've been in office, and I hope that whoever you decide on choosing today, that we will continue to be able to work together and that if you ever have any questions or want to see the process, I invite any of you on election day. As one of your candidates also said, she has experienced that process and has learned from that, and I encourage everyone to do that, especially you that are charged with choosing this registrar, to have a little bit more background on what you're looking for in a registrar. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to help or assist in those questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patholome.
There was a question about if you didn't perform as the clerk education to the students of Plaquemines Parish. That wasn't in that frame. My frame of question was related to that office as a registrar.
Oh, yeah.
For registrar voters. So it's not a point that you, y'all not doing that, but she.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean that either. No, I was just saying, that is, that is a.
I want them to get involved in the process, because they don't want to have to make sure everything is done right.
And we have worked together over the years through the schools, being able to be there, present at the college and career days. And there is other parts on the clerk's side with having the mock elections in the schools. That is all arranged through the Secretary of State. So there are programs out there for that. So I do, I do appreciate the fact that you want to educate the young ones, because we all want the same.
Thing is the process, the application.
Yes.
How important it is. See, they handle that.
Yes, but we work together, we.
I understand you're working together, I understand all that, I appreciate that good, well. But all the registration forms you have to fill out to register to vote have to go to the registrar.
Yes, it does.
That's what I'm saying.
But easily, easier than that, everything can be done online, and that's what they encourage people to do as well, because it's a safe and easy process to be able to register online.
If we go ahead and explain and educate them how to do that simple stuff, so simple, some of them can't do it.
You'd be surprised. Some of them don't know where they were born or they don't know how to spell Plaquemines Parish when they're filling out those forms on career day. So it is, it is a process that we need to focus on.
That's right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the table? Audience?
Rob Fochet. My only question is, what happens if y'all choose this, this registrar voters and then after, say, six months, year, and I would say, give it a couple of years probably, y'all decide that this person is not filling the seat, this is a lifetime appointed position? How do you, how do we get rid of or how do we replace a registrar voters? Just out of my curiosity.
Mr. Danny.
I'll pull it up. Registrar voters, unlike a, an employment position, can't just be removed by the council. Hold on a second. Actually, was pulling up the stuff for the storage of the vehicles a little while ago.
And we can, when we come back, our executive session, we can have that, give that to them when we come back into the meeting.
Yeah, it's the statute, and I just want to make sure I had the correct number. It's eighteen, Title 18, Section 53. The, a registrar is only subject to removal by the State Board of Election Supervisors for willful misconduct related to his or her official duty, willful and persistent failure to perform his or her duty, persistent public conduct, conduct prejudicial to the administration of the laws relative to the registration of voters that brings the office into disrepute or upon conviction of a felony. And there is a, a hearing process through the State Board of Election Supervisors, but the council doesn't have the ability to remove a registrar. And a registrar, they, they call it a lifetime appointment, because you can only be removed for very significant cause, and that's not done by the body that selects them, that's done by the State Board of Election Supervisors.
Mr. Blank.
Danny, could you just please give it the statute number one more time?
Revised statute, Title 18, Section 53.
Thank you.
Mr. Black.
Yeah, that's a good question, Mr. Fochet. The follow-up on that, what happens if this council can't make a decision on, on an appointment? Does it go to the same board for an appointment?
The, the appointment is done, let's see.
I think we're all doing this process, that's why we do this.
But it doesn't, it just doesn't come up very often. Under revised statute, eight, Title 18, Section 51, if the council fails to make the appointment within the timeline set forth, which, and y'all are fairly close to that timeline, then the selection is then done by the State Board of Election Supervisors.
Is there any more questions? Ms. Newberry.
Is it majority or two-thirds vote for the position?
Majority vote.
Any more questions? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Read it, okay. Executive session pursuant to LRS 42:16A1 to discuss the character and professional competence of the following individuals, Sharon Brannon, Victoria Fryerson, Jennifer Gray, Leanne Jenkins, and Brian Van Haverback. Councilmember.
And just as a correct, there was a typo, it's, it's 42:17A1. That's just a citation to the statute, but it's.
I'd like to entertain a motion to go in executive session. We have a motion by Mr. Black, seconded by Mr. Konovich. Machines are open. And the measure passes nine zero. We will go into executive session at 4:38 PM. I would like to return from executive session at 4:58 PM. No bonding or final decision was made in executive session. We'll move to item 3A.
A resolution appointing Blank as the registrar of voters for the Parish of Plaquemines and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Chairman, I'd like to offer the name of Ms. Sharon Brannon.
Mr. Russell.
I'll offer the name of Ms. Sharon Brannon.
We have a motion by Mr. Russell.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Blank.
I'd like to offer substitute motion.
We have Mr. Black.
Yeah, offer a substitute motion, Mr. Brian Van Haverback.
We have a motion for substitution by Mr. Black and seconded by Mr. Albro. Enter discussion from the audience. We'll move to the second, to the substitute motion by Mr. Black. Any questions from the table? Audience, machines are open.
Councilmember Blank.
And the measure passes, I mean, the measure fail five for me and four for. So we are moved to the original motion by Mr. Russell, naming Ms. Sharon Brannon and seconded by Mr. Blank. Any discussion from the audience? Machines are open. And the measure passes eight for one against.
Sharon, congratulations.
Mr. Black.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to else queue in, but I want to thank everybody for being involved in this process. This was very new to us. I mean, I'm not even sure when the last time this was, was done, Kim might know, but everybody had great applications, you know, great presentations. I know stepping up to the plate to, to do something in this type of arena, as Ms. Gray had mentioned, the arena is a difficult decision. So thank you all. Don't be discouraged if you were one of the folks who didn't, did not get the position. It is a very difficult decision for us to make, so congratulations, Sharon, on your appointment. And I know you'll do a great job. And thank you all, other candidates.
Mr. Blank.
I just want to echo that, this is a very difficult decision. I took six pages of notes sitting up here, pored over the applications, spent more than four hours looking at all the different questions. I mean, it's, a lot goes into these, these decisions and, and we do lose sleep over them.
Mr. Russell.
Yes, I also would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation. And as you know, I still would like to see this office merged and consolidated into the clerk of courts office eventually. So thank you for your participation and congratulations, Ms. Brannon.
Is there any more comments from the table?
I think I move with adjournment.
We have a motion by Mr. John Patholome for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Blank. Machines are open. And the measure passes nine zero. We will have adjournment at 5:02 PM.
Thank you, ma'am.